Virginia Beach Planning Commission, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Bob Thornton. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission for this month. And before we get started, I'd ask Ed Weeden to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forget our debt. And lead us down to temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the glory and the power forever. Oh, heavenly Father, we want to give thanks to you, dear Lord, for allowing us to come together, Lord. We ask you to look upon those people that were hit with the hurricane in Florida and in Texas, Father God, that they are able to recuperate, Lord, and disregard their materialistic needs, and be glad that their lives are still spared. We just want to thank you, Lord, for your mercy and grace which you have shorth upon us here in Virginia. We ask you to touch each member of this commission, Lord, as well as people in this audience, Lord God. We ask you to bless each one from the top of their head to the soles of their feet. We ask you to heal our eyes, Lord, of any sickness and pain, Lord, that we may experience, Lord God, for we give all the praise, honor, and glory, and let God's people say amen.
Amen.
Please join Commissioner Horsley with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Commissioner Horsley. I've asked Commissioner Hodson to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All the way to the right is Kay Wilson. She is our city attorney. Next to Kay is Jack Wall. Jack is a civil engineer, and he represents the Rose Hall District. The empty seat is usually occupied by Dr. Karen Quasney. She represents the Princess Anne District, but she is not able to be with us today. Next, you have Don Horsley. Don is an at-large member, and he's a farmer. Next, you have Ron Ripley. Ron is also an at-large member, and he is in real estate management and development. The next person is Jan Rosinski. She is the chair, sorry, the secretary of the Planning Commission.
I don't need a promotion.
I'm bumping you already. And she is a property manager with Long &amp; Foster. Next to Jan is our chairman, Bob Thornton. Bob is in sales, leasing, and development, and he is representing the Lynn Haven District. Next is our vice chair, Dee Oliver. Dee is an at-large member, and she is a funeral director.
My name is Jeff Hodson. I represent the Beach District, and I'm in real estate management. To my left is Mike Enman. Mike is a real estate attorney, and he is also an at-large member. Next is David Weiner. David is in commercial sales, and he represents the Kimpsville District. Beside David is Dave Redmond. Dave is a commercial real estate agent, and he represents Bayside District. And next is Barry Frankenfield, who is our planning director. And Barry, if you would, please introduce your staff.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Ed Weeden, who is my wingman on this, and today he's the CHKD advocate, and he's responsible for Jeans' Day. So if anybody wonders why all the jeans, it's for that effort to support that group. I have an introduction nobody knows about. It's Carol Dozier. Wave your hand here. You don't have to stand up, but she is actually a new employee of the planning department. She's going to be our financial analyst. So in addition to good land use planning, we are going to be fiscally responsible, for sure, in the future. So welcome, and she took her lunch hour to come down and just find out what's going on, and I hope she doesn't leave. So thank you very much. On the planning bench, we have Kevin Kemp, who today is our zoning administrator and planning administrator, since Carolyn Smith is in Vancouver Island. Next to him is Robert Davis, followed by Jonathan Sanders, Jimmy McNamara. On the back row, we have our city attorney Tobias Eisenlohr, Dr. Stephen White, and Marshall Coleman. Thank you very much. Thank you, Barry. The first order of business, or thank you, Jeff, for the introductions as well. The first order of business is the explanation of the rules that we use to run the meetings. I've asked Commissioner Rosinski to explain these rules.
Thank you, Chairman Thornton. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and members of this commission with respect and civility. The commission asks that if you have a cellphone, that you would please silence it or turn it off at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. A complete set of the rules is found in the front of the Planning Commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there's a request for withdrawal or deferral of any item on the agenda. These considerations will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items which the Planning Commission believes are unopposed and have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision for approval or disapproval for an application is made by City Council. The commission thanks you for your attendance. We hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. The next order of business is to address those items to be withdrawn or deferred. Is there an application that needs to be withdrawn or deferred? Please approach.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name, for the record, is Lisa Murphy, and I'm here today on behalf of Water Boxes LLC. Staff has indicated we're requesting this be deferred until your October 11th Planning Commission hearing, so that we can continue discussions with surrounding neighborhoods, also continue to work on the proffers for that rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to this matter being deferred? Hearing none, we would call for the vote on that.
No. A motion.
A motion. I need a vice chair with you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that item to be deferred.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horsley.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's not normal to do this, but I want to defer on this matter, on voting, because I have the applicant, I'm in a business relationship with the applicant on another piece of property.
Okay. So one abstention.
I vote nine for, no abstention. The commission has deferred Water Boxes LLC.
Thank you. The next item we will address are those items that are to be placed on our consent agenda. The vice chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, we have seven items on the consent agenda. The first matter is Agenda Item Number One, and this is an application of Metamorphosis Salon and Spa for a conditional use permit, a tattoo parlor on property located at 624 Independence Boulevard, Suite 102, in the District Four Bayside District. Is there a representative on this application? Hi, would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Molly Zemke, owner of Metamorphosis Salon and Spa.
Great, thank you. Are the conditions acceptable to you in the application?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take a seat. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Redmond to read this into the record.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is an application of Metamorphosis Salon and Spa for a conditional use permit, a tattoo parlor on property located at 624 Independence Boulevard, Suite 102. The subject 1,050 square foot unit is within an existing shopping center and currently operates as a salon and spa, and I'm well familiar with this location. The applicant is requesting to expand their services to include permanent makeup, also known as microblading. This service is classified as tattooing in the city's zoning ordinance, and therefore requires a conditional use permit. No other changes are proposed to the existing signage nor to the exterior of the building or to the site layout. The commission is unaware of any opposition to this application. Staff recommends approval, and the commission agrees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda is Item Number Two, and this is an application of Evergreen Virginia LLC as an applicant and owner for a conditional use permit, car wash facility and modifications of conditions on property located at 3033 3025, 3,001 2981 on Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Rose Hall District. Hello.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, for the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant, Evergreen, which all of you, I'm sure, know by now, is checkered flag Jaguar Land Rover. I think I need to tell you that our disclosure statement is still current. All of our fees have been paid, and the staff write-up and the conditions in the write-up are acceptable to us.
Great, thank you.
And we thank you for placing this on consent.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Wall to read this into the record.
Thank you. The subject Seven Acres Site currently exists as three parcels developed with three car dealerships. A conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and repair was approved in 1986 on one of the parcels, and subsequent approvals for motor vehicle sales and repair for the remaining parcels occurred between 1995 and 2000. The applicant requests a modification of the original conditional use permit in order to remodel and expand the existing Hyundai sales and service building, and a conditional use permit to add a car wash at the rear of the existing building. This will convert the existing Hyundai dealership to a Land Rover and Jaguar dealership. The other conditional use permits will remain in effect. No changes to these conditions are being requested with this application. The expansion of the existing building will result in a two-story structure with 8,500 square foot showroom and 17,000 square foot service area and a car wash facility. There are 35 parking spaces proposed, which are sufficient to address the minimum parking The proposed requests for modification of conditions and conditional use permit for car wash are, in staff's opinion, acceptable, given the predominance of auto-centric uses in the immediate vicinity. While the Lynn Haven strategic growth area master plan calls for a long-term redevelopment of the site with mixed-use, non-residential projects, the proposal is compatible with the existing uses along this section of Virginia Beach Boulevard. The conditions are acceptable to the applicant, staff recommends approval, and there's no known opposition. Therefore, we have placed this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Three. This is an application of WAVE Church as an applicant and owner for a modification of conditions on property located at 1,000 North Great Neck Road, District Five, Lynn Haven. Hello.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, again, for the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant, WAVE Church, property known as 1,000 North Great Neck Road. Disclosure statement is current. All of our fees have been paid. The staff conditions that were given to me, including condition number 12, which was added just before the meeting, is acceptable to us, and we thank you for placing this on consent.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Ripley to read this into the record.
The commission placed this on the consent agenda because it felt it was acceptable to be placed there, and this is an application that extends back to 2003, when the church was formed, or at least this property was rezoned with a conditional use permit. What the applicant wants to do is add a ball field on its property. It's 20, it actually has a lot of acreage, 27 and 1/2 acres. And it's also adding a little picnic shelter, and they've conditioned the time of day they will use the ball field. They've conditioned that there won't be any lighting in the ball field, so it's really very passive use. And they've added a little recreational shelter, and that has some low-level lighting in that. It's a nice addition to the church. The church has been a really great addition to the community, and so we put it on consent.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Five, and this is an application of Holland South Investments LLC as applicant and owner for a conditional rezoning of B-1A limited community business to a conditional B-2 community business on property located at 3420 Holland Road in the Rose Hall District.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the applicant. Appreciate being on the consent agenda. It's proffered, so it's our conditions, and we agree to them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Weiner to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. This is a rezoning from B-1A limited community business to conditional B-2 community business. 1.36 acre parcel is at the northeast corner of Stone Shore and Holland Roads and is currently zoned B-1A limited community business. It is currently developed as a strip shop center. In April 2017, the City Council approved the modification of a conditional use permit for the expansion of a vocational school, beauty school, within the shopping center. The applicant requests to rezone the property to B-2 community business to enable additional uses on site, specifically a tattoo parlor and body piercing establishment for a beauty school tenant. The comprehensive plan designates us to be in the suburban area. Staff has recommended approval, and we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Seven. This is an application of Atlantic Wildfowl Heritage Museum for a conditional use permit open-air market on property located at 1113 Atlantic Avenue in District Six Beach. Hi, how are you?
Good. Mr. Commissioner, Ms. Vice Chairman, Secretary, and members of the commission, for the record, my name is Len Hightower. I'm the executive director of the Atlantic Wildfowl Heritage Museum, and the conditions are acceptable to us.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Hodson to read this into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit for an open-air market to allow a mobile vendor on the south patio of the Atlantic Wildfowl Heritage Museum in order to provide an additional revenue source for the museum. The museum is located within a DeWitt Cottage, which is the main structure on the property. The applicant plans to work with a vendor to sell food and drinks on the property using a flat-top grill with seating under a single umbrella. As this proposed use is outside of the right-of-way and on the property of the museum, it is classified as an open-air market, which requires a conditional use permit. The site will be open primarily from Memorial Day through Labor Day. The resort advisory commission supports the application. Staff recommends approval with the attached conditions, and the Planning Commission is in agreement with their recommendations, so we have placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Eight, and this is an application of Eye Candy Lash Boutique for a conditional use permit, a tattoo parlor on property located at 4322 Holland Road, District Three, Rose Hall. Hi, how are you?
Hi, good afternoon.
Would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Shanika Price, and I am the owner of Eye Candy Lash Boutique.
Thank you. And are the conditions set forth acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Rosinski to read this into the record.
Thank you. The applicant desires to open a beauty salon in a unit within the shopping center and is requesting a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor in order to offer permanent cosmetic makeup known as microblading. According to the applicant, the microblading portion of the business will include up to four workstations and will employ up to five people. The proposed hours are 12 to 9:00 p.m. Monday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Tuesday through Friday, and 9 to 6:00 on Saturday. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building, with the exception of a new sign at the entrance. The elevations of the sign depict a raceway-mounted channel sign, which is consistent with the other signs on the shopping center. No window signs or neon is accepted. The proposed conditional use permit for this use is consistent with the comprehensive plan land use policy for the suburban area and is consistent with the commercial nature of the surrounding properties. According to the traffic engineering study, the addition of this tattoo studio will have no impact on traffic movement along Holland Road and South Plaza Trail, nor is it expected to generate traffic above the typical normal-for-retail operation. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions which are acceptable to the applicant. Therefore, we have placed this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Nine. This is an application of Cheyenne Chetlos for a conditional use permit, family daycare home on property located at 1921 Peril Street in District Four Bayside. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm Cheyenne Chetlos, and I want to be a family daycare home provider.
Great, thank you. And are the conditional, conditions that were set forth in the application acceptable?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Redmond to read this into the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is an application of Cheyenne Chetlos for a conditional use permit, specifically for a family daycare home on property located at 1921 Peril Street. It's a very simple application. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a family daycare home to care for up to 12 children within a single-family dwelling. The property has an enclosed backyard for children to play outdoors. The property also has a circular driveway, which is conducive to drop-off operations, and the applicant is required to stagger drop-off times, further limiting any potential impact of this home-based facility. The commission is unaware of any opposition to this application. The staff recommends approval, and the commission concurs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that was the last item on the consent agenda, and I would like to move that to approve consent agenda items number one, two, three, five, seven, eight, and nine be approved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rosinski, call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mike?
I need to disclose that I'm a member of the Town Bank Advisory Board, Virginia Beach, and although we're a recommending body, we're not a deciding body. I will be voting, but I wanted to disclose my membership in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the same thing on those items, any item dealing with Town Bank. I have a letter on file with the clerks setting forth that I am a member of the bank, and that since we don't make any final decisions, I don't know the applicant, I have no financial interest. If it's not the bank, it's the applicant, then I will vote on these as well.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, those are items two, five, and nine.
Yep.
So you also will vote?
I will also vote.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the vote?
Vote, votes open. I vote 10 to zero. The commission has approved items one, two, three, five, seven, eight, nine for consent with the abstentions. No, no, no.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the applicants who were on the consent agenda this afternoon and for attending the meeting. These items will be scheduled on the City Council agenda, and you'll be hearing from the staff as to when that date will be, more than likely, next month. Thank you. You are free to go and enjoy your afternoon. Now, we would address the remaining items on the agenda, and I'll ask the secretary to handle that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Thornton. The first item to be heard today is an application of Alan Zinkle for a conditional use permit retail sales firearm on property located at 2252 Creeks Edge Drive, District Five, Lynn Haven. If the applicant will come forward, please. If you'll please state your name for the record, and then explain your application.
Alan Zink. And the application is for a firearms transfers out of my house. No, what I want to state is that there are no retail sales at all. There will not be people coming to the location, coming in and browsing. That's not at all what the plan is. There will be no retail sales at all. It's simply transfers and background checks, which is a transfer.
Any questions of the applicant, Mr. Zink? Ron?
I brought it up in the informal meeting, and the day we came by, we came by the Planning Commission, drove by in a van, the garage door was open, and it looked like it was pretty wide open, and we think we didn't go into your property or anything, but it looked like your safes, your gun safes, were in the garage. Is that correct?
Yep.
Do you normally leave that garage door open like that?
Yes, during, anytime I'm working in there, which I've been doing a lot of lately, it's been a long time trying to get the place straight away, but when, thinking positively, we get passed, so I can start my little business in there, the garage doors will be locked and closed at all times, and it is alarmed, and there are cameras all around the house and in the house.
It's just, I'm just telling you what we saw, you know? It was open, your door was open, there was a TV on.
I can understand that.
It looked a little casual to us. It just looked casual, and, you know, if you have firearms there, I can't speak from other planning commissioners, but we seemed a little, it was very different than what we've normally seen, normally in these situations there inside the house, and you never see anything from the outside. And anyway, so you're saying you would keep, you're going to keep the garage door?
Yeah, because it's not used as a garage. It's an office, it will be an office. It's actually getting set up now as this process progresses. I'm setting up the office in there, and so we do have some stuff in there now, so yes, it's been open, but as soon as any business starts, it'll be closed and locked.
Thank you.
For good.
Jack?
Good question. There's a condition, it's conditioned, but how many, how many visits do you expect a month, you know, on average, for your transfers?
With regards to transfers, which means somebody has purchased, already purchased an item from the internet or from someone else, they already own it, but it has to come and go through a firearms dealer, which I've been for 10 years, by the way. I had the same, did the same thing up at Chesterfield before we moved here, and it's by appointment only. There's going to be nobody coming over just to come in and say, hey, what do you got? It won't happen. Strictly by appointment, somebody buys an item online, it has to be shipped to a dealer, which would be me. I call the owner who bought it, let him know it's it. I set up a time for him to come by, comes by, gives me his IDs, do background check, and if he's approved, which they always are, because anybody that signs that paper, those federal and state papers, are going to be legal to buy it, or at least I've never come across an issue. And then that's it, by appointment. So I know that I'm limited in the number of transfers I can do, and we'll stand by that.
Which is five, hand-to-hand transfers. What it, that's right. Okay, all right, thanks.
Other questions of Mr. Zink?
I got a question.
Don?
How do, if I want to buy a gun online, and how do I find out about you? How do you advertise to get your name out there?
Well, either you'd know, because now you know me from this word of mouth, or, but not really, when certain people online sell guns, Bass Pro Shops, Cabellos, when I get disapproved, I will call Bass, so Pro Shops, Cabellos, et cetera, et cetera, all the people I know that sell guns. I have to fax them a copy of my federal firearms license. They keep it on file, so if somebody goes online and purchases a gun from the general area, the person buying it will say, you know, where can I pick it up? Cabellos or whatever will have my name there showing my address and phone number. He calls me, says I'd like to do a transfer, and then I can communicate with the seller and make sure they have my FFL, which they will, and then they ship it to me. It's not my, it's not my item, and I don't own it, but I receive it, put it in the ATF book showing I received it, which is very specific what the rules we need to follow. You can imagine with the ATF. It goes into a safe, I call the owner, the purchaser, we set up a time for him to come by, he comes by and purchases. He does not, he's not allowed to possess it until he's passed that.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We'll...
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Close the public hearing and...
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. We've got some opposition. Please call in, call in.
Our first speaker in opposition is Joan Ryan.
Our first speaker in opposition is Joan Ryan.
You can please state your name for the record. My name's Joan Ryan. I live at 2164 Marina Shores Drive, which is in Long Creek Cove condominiums. We are, I live, my backyard is less than 50 yards from Mr. Zink's garage door that you see open. I come before you today in opposition of this application. I have put together in person a package of 29 neighbors notarized that have signed in opposition to this. I personally witnessed 18 of the signatures, and my first concern is for the safety of myself, I'm single, live alone, my children, my grandchildren, and the other children in the neighborhood. I also question the effect that this will have on property values. I have several other concerns. One is being that the person who is actually purchasing the gun is the one that will be possessing the gun, and this is not a straw purchase. Will there be notary present to notarize the signatures? Also, on October 13th, 60 Minutes ran a special on Remington Arms Company. They had misfired rifles that don't even, you don't even have to pull the trigger, and the rifles misfired. Four out of 10 went off in this manner. The government can't recall guns. They can only recall toy guns. Only one in four Remington guns have been fixed, and there are still millions out there. I'm wondering if one of these may end up in my neighborhood. And also, there's a copy in of my condominium documents, item six, the last two pages of the little packet I gave you, said it should be for residential use, except to go to 19.2, which I referenced, and that was in order for the developer to be able to sell condominiums out of one of the units, but not, I don't think the intent was to have guns or anything else there. And in conclusion, I just want to thank you again, I'm sorry, I have the wrong glasses on, want to thank you again and state that I vehemently oppose this application, and I hope you do too. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Wait, hold on a second, we might have a question or two for you. Does anybody have a question for the speaker? Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Didn't want you to get away too quick.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Amanda Thompson.
Hello.
Hi, if you can please speak, state your name for the record.
Amanda Thompson. And we live at 2208 Cape Barbara Drive, and I got a message in the mail saying that someone is in my neighborhood wanting to sell guns right next to where we live. And I don't think that I want my daughter growing up in an area where my neighbor has a garage full of guns. I mean, I, it's fine for those that want to purchase them and have them in an appropriate area, but I don't think an area right next to my daughter is appropriate. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Robert Sully.
Good afternoon, my name is Robert Sully. I live in Long Creek Cove, it's 2145 Marina Bay Cove. I live directly across the street from where the proposed sale of arms are, and already I've seen an influx of cars in the neighborhood driving by this gentleman's house just to read the sign. So there's been numerous, numerous cars driving by the neighborhood just to see the sign. So they already know that there's a proposition that they might, you might approve the sale of guns. Even after, a week after the sign went up, I saw somebody smoking a joint in front of the house, and I'm looking, I'm saying, this will bring sometimes unseated characters to the neighborhood, even if they're not looking to purchase, but possibly to steal. There's kids that go up and down in front of Mr. Zink's house all the time. I see them all the time. I have two grandchildren there. I am strongly opposed. We're trying to get guns off the street, not back onto the street, and if people need guns that much, they can go to a gun show or something where it's more authorized, more controlled. This is a residential neighborhood where residences live, and we do not think that it'd be a good idea to have guns being sold from this gentleman's property. Like I said before, and I'm repeating it, but people have driven by numerous times just looking at the sign, so they know already that there's a chance that you might approve the sale of guns in a residential neighborhood, and I strongly disagree, and I hope you do not vote for this proposition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Sully? None, thank you, sir.
Okay, that was our last speaker.
Let Mr. Zink know he has rebuttal.
We usually do that, so...
Mr. Zink, if you care to have any rebuttal of any of the comments, you have time at the podium.
Actually, no, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. With that, then we will close the public hearing and open up discussion amongst the commissioners. Any thoughts or comments or...
I guess I'll start. Mrs. Wilson, can I ask you to, there, I know there's a certain law, or what we're supposed to, what we're supposed to be, what we can think about and what we can't think about in firearm sales. Could you just enlighten us on that information again, please?
Firearms are a unique quantity in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and in order to deny an application for firearm sales, you have to deny them because of the sale, not because they're a firearm. This is just like any other retail sale in this neighborhood, and any objection you have has to be land use related, not related to the firearm itself.
Ron?
But it is a conditional use permit, and there's a reason for the use permit, and that is for to determine if it's compatible with the neighborhood, and if we feel it's not compatible with the neighborhood, I believe we're, we could recommend what we'd like to recommend. Is that not correct?
A land use issue, yes, sir.
Okay.
Jack?
You need to piggyback on David's, in your question to Kay, there is a condominium association bylaws that are included in here. Do those, do those have any effect on, you know, they don't have any effect on land use, so that's...
The city of, the city of Virginia Beach does not regulate condominium documents. We don't enforce them. Therefore, in order to have any kind of a decision made as to whether or not this is permitted by the condominium documents would require the residents to go to their condominium association. We do not enforce those.
Could I perhaps ask a question of Mr. Davis?
Sure.
Did you, Mr. Davis, did you do any kind of search to see if there's any other home occupations in this particular neighborhood, i.e. childcare or anything like that? Are you familiar, did anybody look at that?
I'm sorry, I can't find the speaker button, but... Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, yes, sir.
I reviewed the application based on orders proposed, I didn't, can you tell me a little more about your question?
Well, this is a home occupation, and my question is, is there any other home occupations in the neighborhood that sets any kind of precedent for that?
Well, in doing my zoning history search, there were no other home occupation conditions that had been issued in this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Just point out the obvious here in this package. I don't think, we've been doing this a long time, we've seen a lot of these applications. I have never seen 29 signatures against something like this before. This just kind of caught me off guard when I looked at it, and it's kind of surprising to me, so...
Well, do, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm not going to make a motion yet, but I just, I just don't have that, I didn't like seeing the garage door open, five safes sitting out. That, to me, I know we can't regulate that, and we can't talk about that, but I mean, we can't, we can't talk about it, because, but it's in the neighborhood, and it's a, it's a use in the neighborhood, but I just didn't like that. That, to me, didn't sit well.
Well...
Well, I'll put a motion up, then. I want to make a motion to deny, and my deny is based on, well, just make a motion to deny, that's good.
And do I have a second? Mr. Ripley moved to deny, is there a second on their motion?
A second.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Ripley, and a second from Mr. Weiner. Ready for the vote?
Votes open. By vote, 10 to zero, the application of Alan Zink has been denied.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is an application of Ona Dang for a conditional use permit to have two parlor and body piercing establishment on property located at 3420 Holland Road, District Three, Rose Hall. I guess I don't have to tell you to state your name for the record.
For the record, Eddie Bridon, I'm a justice attorney, and I represent the owner of the center, which was case number five, and I'm assisting the tenant whose establishment, this beauty school's been in this center, in the, in the units that they're occupying for over 16 years, and I expected this would be on the consent agenda. I understand there's some discussion this morning about, well, let me back up. The owner of the center made it very clear to me from day one when she contacted me that she would never permit or lease space for a tattoo parlor in her center. And if, I gather that there was conversation, or there is concern about the fact that this establishment is occupying and has occupied for over 16 years, separate space within the center. And if you want to, I mean, to do dermalblading and, and piercing ears and body piercing, I've never, I didn't even realize until I heard this when I got down here today, that that's also as if the same thing as tattooing. And anyway, I, I think the smarter way to deal with this is to suggest that there be a condition, because the condition's recommended by staff, which we totally agree with, I think are sufficient, but if you want to suggest that there not be any tattooing in the center, we don't have a problem with that, because there's not going to be any. But, you know, to suggest that this beauty school has to do its dermalblading in one section of its school versus the other, I'm not going to sit here and follow my sword and tell you, you know, we'll take a denial. I mean, if you want us to do that, do that, but I just, it just, it's, it just seems almost absurd to me, but, and I know it's not, it's what the ordinance says, but, you know, they're not the same use. So, anyway, with that, if you want to add a condition, we don't think it makes sense that they can only do the dermalblading or the body piercing in one section of their establishment versus another. You know, you can use the left end 101 and 102, but just, just to us seems rather ridiculous, but whatever you want to do.
Cheyenne?
I have a question, and maybe I misunderstood the application, but I thought that she was already in one unit and was wanting to open the second unit in order to do that.
No, ma'am. They've been, they've been, they've been there in those units for 16 years.
Okay, I, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, I wasn't being informal.
And I thought that's why, I thought that's why we had this coming before us, because she was expanding her beauty school, so to speak, to provide this...
No, they're just, they, I believe they've been doing dermalblading for some time, but they are, I don't know that for a fact, but I believe that's the case, and because your zoning folks are going around and checking places, that's why this is coming before you. It's a, it's a beauty school, they're doing dermalblading, and they're perfectly content to do it in one end versus the other, but they, you know, my point is that the landlord will not allow tattooing, period. We don't consider what they're doing to be tattooing, and if you want to put a condition on it that there'd be no, under this use permit, that there'd be no tattooing, we totally agree with it, and, and if that doesn't, that doesn't work, then you can limit it to the units 101 and 102, but it's the same school's been there, same establishment's been there all along.
Well, what, what caused us some concern about this was the word tattoo. You weren't there to help us this morning, but we, we have an ordinance that says they have to be so many feet apart. So you're saying in the condition to remove the word tattoo, I mean, and Kay told us earlier that what you want to do is legally thought of as tattooing, but the word tattoo is what got us...
And I perfectly understand that, Mr. Chairman, I, and my client, who owns the shopping center, is aware, and, but her statement to me from, from day one is, I will not allow tattooing in my center, and she owned it for, you know, since it was just about when it was built, so, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make things overly complicated, you know, it's, it's the ordinance, it's not anything that you folks, you know, have any direct responsibility for, but I think they're two separate uses, and ought to be two separate uses personally, but that's not the way the state code is written, so that's the dilemma. But it, I think the fact that it's an establishment, an existing establishment, that's been there for 16-plus years, where, where we're talking about in the center, it's not an expansion. That, I believe there's, the wording of the ordinance would cover this without any additional conditions, but to the extent that someone may want to have an additional assurance, the owner of the center will not allow tattooing in the center, as we commonly all understand what tattooing is. And we think it's different than permanent eyeliner or eye makeup.
Mr. Chairman? Well, you know, the intent of the ordinance, I'm sure you understand that, okay? We don't want to have tattoo parlor showing up every other space, so we wanted to try to separate them, so that was the idea.
Totally.
And nobody understood what you've said there until you said it. One question I do ask is that if, if we grant this, if it did put language in there, there'd be no tattoo, and perhaps no advertising, no tattooing, okay? Because the use permit could be transferred, correct? If it said just tattooing, somebody could transfer it, and it could become a tattoo parlor, provided these conditions.
If the ownership of the center, you're absolutely right. If the ownership of the center changed, that's, that's correct. But again, I'm not, I'm not trying to put something under the, under the door here at all.
I don't, I don't...
So, that, my point would be, you know, have it provide that no tattooing can take place under this use permit, but you, then Kay's going to say, how do you define tattooing?
No. If you, if you make a condition that says no tattooing, why are you granting this? This is for tattooing and body piercing. If you say no tattooing, she cannot microblade. She can't microblade.
They say it's for microblading only.
Well, let's see, Kevin, our zoning administrator, has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest if you did want to put a condition, you could word it such that tattooing be of the cosmetic or permanent makeup type and restricted to use within the beauty school, or that use.
There we go.
In associating with it, because the code won't let us distinguish between tattooing, but you could condition that it's associated with the beauty school and that, that type.
And I would also add, I think you can legally add a condition that the word tattooing would not be utilized in any advertising or signage on the property, because that won't be the case, which should keep you from having people come in for tattoos when they, they're not allowed, and they're not going to be done in the beauty school anyway.
Well, we, right now, we don't have another condition that's worded the way between Jimmy and you and your client. Can you all, are you comfortable with what he's agreed to, and you've just stated to make the condition read that way? Should we take a minute and write it before we vote on this?
If he's comfortable with the spirit of that condition, we can have that crafted up, you know, before council to go forward in that, that manner.
Everybody okay with that on this panel? Okay. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Any comments?
There are no additional speakers.
Well, they will close the public hearing and discuss this. David?
Can I, first off, I apologize, I had something this morning that caused me to miss this portion of the debate this morning, but I would like to make one point, and that is, the ordinance is the ordinance. So, I mean, we try and come up with these fine, you know, granular distinctions between various kinds of tattooing, it's probably not going to work. I mean, you're permanently applying ink to skin, and it can be in the form of an eyebrow, it can be on the form of something like a butterfly on someone's lower back, or the sort that you would see at the beach. or the sort that you would see at the beach quite a bit. Nonetheless, that's what it is. So, I mean, the idea that we're going to try and now sort of, you know, come up with these fine distinctions within the context of an ordinance that says it's tattooing, which is what it says, I don't know, strikes me as kind of splitting hairs, maybe beyond where we should split them. I don't know how to do that, but it seems to me it probably ought to be an up or down.
But, you know, Dave, I think when we, we didn't envision this, you know, in the ordinance. So it's a little, it's a fine line I think we're trying to figure out. So sometimes you got to, it's a growing situation. And in this case, I didn't realize that the applicant had been there 16 years and operating as a school. That's what's being said. And so it's, and she just happens to fall into this bucket as far as approval. My concern, when we voted on the changing of the ordinance while back, was that we don't have a situation where we look like, and no disrespect to the naval base, but the old naval base when there used to be, you know, the honky-tonk going in. I don't want our city to turn into that type of situation. Tattoo is acceptable, it's a business, not a problem. But we just don't need them banked altogether, you know, and really creating a high source. So that, I hear what you're saying. It's a tough line, it's a tough needle to thread, is what we're kind of doing here. But I think if you would not, if you limited to no advertising of tattooing, and he agrees not to do any tattooing, and I know that's, I fear that's not something we can do. I think we're getting there.
Jan?
I'm thinking based on that, that it might be better to ask them to have that particular service offered out of just one, you know, one suite or the other, so that it does, you know, we don't run into something falling within that, you know, the distance. You know, because I don't, I think what Kay is trying to say is that we can't really say you can't do tattooing, because microblading is, according to the law, tattooing. So I think it might be better to put a condition of where it can be done at.
I have a question for Eddie. Tell us if you can, she's got, these two locations are in the same shopping center. She's been there for many, many years. How are they operated today? Are there different businesses in?
Same business.
Same business.
Same establishment, same ownership.
It's just not enough room in one, under one roof, so she's got it spread out.
Been that way from the beginning.
So this is, the new business is the microblading, and because it's tattooing, it has to go through this process legally.
The fact that they teach and provide microblading and body piercing, piercing your ears or whatever other body part, some people may want pierced. That's why they're, that is why they're here. It's a part of what they teach and a part of what they offer. It's a vocational school and a business, and that they offer those services. And that's why we're here. Like I said, it's good discussion. We're going to, however you all decide, we can, you know, we can move forward. But it just, it's not, it isn't as, anyway, as Mr. Ripley said, that's been my understanding of this ordinance and why the 600 feet is there. And that's absolutely never going to happen here, as long as this owner owns the center. You all, whatever you recommend, we appreciate your comment.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I 100% support Ron's suggestion about how to deal with this. I understand Jan's point, but I hate to have, limit a business person from being able to move operations from, in between these two suites that some business, some need might pick up that they need more space for that as well in the other suite. And I just don't see any main gain in that. Now, we need to realize, though, and I appreciate Eddie's cooperation on the additional condition, which we should do. But, see, this, the landlord, I'm sure doesn't want to permit tattoos, but that may not be the landlord next month or next year, and they sell the property. We don't know that it's in a lease that prohibits any tattooing. And we're not asking for a copy of a lease, you know, but they're just making a representation to us, which I'm sure may or may not be in the lease. It may just be the attitude of the landlord that said, well, we're not going to allow tattoos in here. And so I think we need the condition in there about the advertising, no advertising. And I think that'll take care of the issue for this particular application, based on its history and the type of operation that they seem to have had for 16 years and want to continue.
Any other? Jack?
I'm fine with either, either limiting to one of the facilities or to just the permanent cosmetic makeup, you know. I'm just trying to figure out which one's cleaner. You know, permanent cosmetic makeup condition or limiting it to just one of the storefronts. And limiting to one of the storefronts would align with the ordinance. You know, that's currently, currently in place. But, I mean, I would be accepted, I'd find it acceptable to do a modification for you limiting to just permanent cosmetic makeup as well. So it's, it's amazing to toss up.
So no advertising and permanent?
No advertising, of course.
And limited to permanent cosmetic.
Hey, you guys taking notes down there on the bench? Dave?
I still disagree with that, to the extent that I think we're rewriting the ordinance in ways that we can't. I mean, you know, we're trying to make a distinction that doesn't exist in law. And I would suggest that, not have it open in front of me, but I would suggest that, I mean, where Ron's going, I think, gets us about as far as we can get, which is the advertising part. So you don't have something out on the street that says, tattoos, come here, if that's possible. And Kay's rolling her eyes already. The, but I like that. The rest of it, I mean, I think with some of the stuff, like conditional use permits for some of the uses, the applicant provides a particular kind of service and teaches that particular kind of service, which is the microblading, about which I know next to nothing. And the owner says that she doesn't want anything beyond that use in the shopping center. And in some cases like this, where our hands are somewhat tied by what the ordinance says, that's all we got to go on. And, I mean, I'm comfortable supporting the application with the condition with regard to advertising. I don't think it makes sense to try and come up with a distinction between different kinds of things, because there isn't one that exists in law, as far as I can tell. And I'm not comfortable trying to tell them how they arrange things within the course of their business, the floor plan of their business for what works best in there. You can only do it in this suite, but not that suite. I don't know how that gets, I don't know what that gets us, other than I think unnecessarily tying the hands of a business owner in terms of how they organize. You wouldn't tell a farmer, you know, how to do that. He knows how to arrange the land on which he's operating, or, you know, or any other kind of manufacturing the like. It strikes me that that's just sort of overly intrusive and burdensome. So I think the approach that Ron has works, and works about as best as we're going to be able to get this, given the confines that we have.
Jeff, and then Kay.
I was going to make a motion unless you want to.
No, I just, I have a question, because I think with all the conversation, I've missed something somewhere. And I just want clarity. The tattoo ordinance, 600 feet apart, that's the ordinance, period. Should the beauty school go out of business? And we pass this, those two suites get rented again, does that transfer to them, to the new businesses? So then you can have book-in tattoo businesses? Is that correct?
But they can't advertise tattoo.
But they can advertise, so then that transfers too. I'm just trying to kind of get clarity on how this is going to.
Run, the conditions run with the property.
The beauty school lady dies.
Oh, we didn't mean.
Well, because that's where, you know, well, she doesn't. I'm sorry.
That's not a big deal.
No, I mean, it's a she's in, right? She goes out of business.
Moves to Florida.
I'm just kind of going, moves to Florida, and she's out of business. And so now we have an ordinance in place and two book-in tattoo parlors. How do we prevent the next tier? It's basically, it's where you're going, that's where Ron's going with this. It's not so much whether she's in one end or the other.
Well, and that was why I was suggesting that it could only be done out of one or the other.
So I'm just trying to make sure I understand it.
And I'm sorry to belabor this.
I don't either.
The lease, the lease does not permit, but, you know, it's not something that the city enforces. The lease does not permit tattooing, period. So if this goes out of business, and Mr. Emmons points exactly right, this goes out of business, the current landlord will not allow tattooing. You made that very, very clear, but that landlord may not be there anymore.
Yeah, she sells.
So, the way to, well, the way to do, one way to do it is the way you all are talking about, or, you know, with this idea that it'd only be allowed in one space versus the other. But I believe that you can limit the advertising. And I believe, again, Kay may disagree with me on the second part, I believe you can say, because we're agreeing to the condition, okay? It's not you imposing it. We're agreeing to the condition that it would only be for the dermalblading, permanent makeup, and body piercing. And we're saying that the classic, what we all consider to be tattooing, and the advertising of tattooing would be prohibited, because that's what the owner of the property doesn't want. And it's not what this long-term tenant is proposing or doing. So, but, you know, if that's just too much, then go with the other and move it on. I'm not, it's.
No, I just was just asking.
It's a very good question.
Due to the fact that we are within the ordinance.
Excellent question.
And so if everybody just stops.
It isn't, I'm not, not, anyway, it's a good discussion.
I'm okay with the condition that the uses that will be allowed here will only be microblading, permanent makeup, and body piercing. Okay? And then I think we should, there could be no advertising for any other types of tattooing, because we're making us define tattoo, and that becomes a problem, because it's already defined for us. So if we do them that way, I think we can, we can go ahead and do these two conditions, at least in the spirit of them. Okay?
That seems to, seems to work. You okay with that, Kevin?
Yes, and I've been taking good notes over here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, now, any other questions before we have a motion? I see none this way. Jeff?
I'd make a motion to approve the application with the change in condition to state that only, to state exactly what Kay said.
Very legal. And a second on that motion.
A second.
Jack, seconded by Jack. Motion made, we're ready to vote.
Vote's open.
Put it wrong, I'm sorry.
My vote, 10 to 0, the application of Own Dang has been approved with the change in the condition, only allowing permanent makeup, tattooing, and permanent eye shadow.
Microblading.
Microblading.
Eye shadow.
All right, Chair.
That's ice skating on Little Bitty Skate. Is there any other?
That was the last item on the, that was the last item on the agenda.
Any other further business for this body? If none, on behalf of my commissioners, my fellow commissioners, I thank everyone for attending today. Thank the planning director for his excellent work in preparing the agenda. Meeting adjourned.